Today, we had left off then with the resolution that went down. So we're now on amended bill number 59-32. Recognize as Speaker Pangolinan. Speaker Ben? 59-32.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 59-32, as amended and further substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations, be accepted.
And would you like to speak on it?
Yes.
Okay, we may proceed.
I'd like to then move that Bill 59-32, as amended and further substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations, be placed in the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on the bill.
Okay, yes, Senator, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, and she's just messy, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 59-32 would amend Chapter 162, Title 11 of Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing what is known as the Collective Investment Funds Act. Basically, Madam Speaker, what this bill would do is it would allow financial institutions that manage pension funds, basically pension funds, on behalf of an access fiduciary in the management of that pension fund, accept contributions from the different pension funds that it manages, and allow it to establish what you would call a collective investment trust in a local institution that would allow then these different pension funds from different entities, the proceeds of those funds, the contributions received from the employee and the company of those funds would then be allowed to be pooled and placed into this thing entity called or account called in a collective investment trust or funds act, hence the name collective investment funds. The reason why the bill is being introduced and proposed is that right now there is kind of an ambiguity with regards to how these funds can be managed locally. There are federal regulations that require the management of these funds to be governed and managed by these fiduciaries pursuant to federal regulation. And on the local side, we really don't have anything clear that establishes the authority for these funds, and we wanted to make that absolutely clear so that those that manage these funds, when they go to their regulators on the federal side, are now able to kind of work with the federal regulators and looking at the local legislation and the local regulations in examining these funds, ensuring that the funds meet the federal requirements as well as the local requirements, and that the members of the funds are protected in their investment because after all, this is their pension fund, this is their retirement fund, that they are protected, and the way that they are protected is of course not only on the oversight of the federal side, but oversight over our local insurance commissioner. So these funds, of course, as I mentioned, now why does it benefit the people who have these pension funds to have their money and given authority for their manager to pool these funds? Well, one of the things, Madam Speaker, of course, is the cost of managing these funds. Usually, if you have an investment trust fund that accepts your retirement fund, you either put them in 401Ks, 457s, IRAs, KEOs, SEPs, and other financial instruments that allow you some tax advantages of putting them in funds. Now, when you're managing more than one fund for more than one individual from the different companies, and you're able to pool that, you're able to reduce your operating costs and your administrative fees, not only on the management side of the funds, but also on the investment side. You're now able to buy, for example, if you wish to buy mutual funds or individual stocks on behalf of the beneficiaries of monies you are managing, you're able to pool those funds and reduce the cost of trading, for example, so that it doesn't cost you, you know, $20 a trade plus one cent per share, it costs you $5 a trade and half a cent a share because you're buying 100,000 shares versus buying 10,000 shares. So it allows then the manager to reduce his operating costs on the trading side, and then that gets passed on to the beneficiaries of the trust in terms of less administrative expenses that they're able to charge these individual companies, as well as, of course, the individual account holders for that. And so, on the other side, just the cost of making sure that reports are sent out and so forth, you're able to get more economies of scale for producing these reports when you're doing it for a larger number actually than you offer just single amounts. And so, how do we ensure then that these costs are known to the consumer, passed on to the consumer, understood by the consumer? And that is by requiring that these fiduciaries then would have, for example, a requirement that they shall have a written plan so that they describe the fund, its investment options, its cost, and its administration, the changes in the values of the funds and the investment vehicles that they offer. All of this has to be written and submitted to the insurance commissioner, and of course submitted and reported to the holders and the owners of the monies that they manage. So not only do they submit them to the company who are participants in the collective investment trust, whose monies are pooled, they're also required to send them and make them known to all of the individual account holders. So all the employees of a company that participate in a retirement program sponsored by that company, who hand over the money to these fiduciaries, are required to receive these written reports. And again, the control each fund is administered by the fiduciary, and they are required to make these reporting requirements and ensure that. We also require that the accounts are audited. And so, we know that the federal requirements for these fiduciaries, managers of these funds, are required to undergo certain audits by the federal government. And actually, the fact that we are implementing this makes it absolutely clear, because there was a little bit of ambiguity with regards to whether or not the audits are required on the local side and so forth, and so we are then ensuring that it's absolutely clear that audited reports are required for these fiduciaries and their control over the funds. The internal controls required to be implemented to ensure that the funds is valued regularly, as I mentioned, that they know that how much the fund is the value of each of the funds that they manage, the changes in the pricing of those funds, publicly traded stocks, other bonds, EFTs, are all then required to be reported and available for information to each individual account holder. So just as you have, for example, if you have an investment account at TD America Trade, for example, or Scott Trade, or for some of the discount brokers, or if you have them with the more institutional brokers, then you have access to each of the investment vehicles that are sold by that company, and they are updated every single day. We, again, this was an amendment that was placed by the committee, and we certainly agree, because we, in the original, we thought that if they are valued quarterly, that would be okay, but the amendment is that they shall be updated each business day, and that is not a problem, we accept that, we think it actually is a greater service to the consumer to make sure that he can track those investment vehicles every single day. The other highlights of the bills, again, are annual financial reports by the company that must be filed, and these annual reports would outline the operation of the company and would include the following information such as fund fees and expenses, the list of investments in the funds with their costs and the market values and the date of the closing of the report, summary of the transactions throughout the year organized by type of investment, including summary of purchase, including costs, summary of sales, including profit and loss, and other investment charges, income to and distributions from the funds. If you're, for example, invested in dividend paying stocks and such, that all of those dividends are recorded, and then they charge you an administrative fee for processing the receipt of those funds, or any other charge that may be associated with that, then those are disbursements from the fund, and those have to be articulated and placed within the report that's given, and then a description of any investment in default. So if any of the investment vehicles that are offered close out or become, are in default, information on that must be included as well. The financial institutions may include a financial report and the description of the fund's values on previous dates, as well as income and disbursements. All of these funds, the idea, Madam Speaker, is rather than sending these pooled funds off island to be invested off island, we are now allowing this collective investment trust to be established here so that the contributions from the different companies can be placed within that account or that fund, and the money doesn't have to be shipped off island. And what does that do to our local economy? What it does is, rather than shipping capital off island, now we have those funds readily available here, and the financial institutions that accepts those funds for deposits and safekeeping are now able to generate additional loans and so forth from their increased capital base by the deposits made in this. So it really is good way to keep our money on island rather than shipping our money off island. Management fees, with any service comes fees, and so the payment to the fiduciary or these companies who manage these funds will charge a fee as you have in any investment manager. And again, these are allowed to be charged in a reasonable amount, and they are inconsistent with the legitimate value of the services and with the tangible benefit to the participating fiduciary accounts that would not have been provided to these accounts where they're not invested in the funds. It also governs whenever, for example, there's some errors in the funds, is made in good faith and is exercised in due care in connection with the administrative fund, is not a violation. But of course, errors that are not in good faith will have to be subject to the oversight and regulation by the commissioner. And we are now, of course, requiring that the division of the insurance and banking will regulate this article and shall inspect all such funds no less than annually for compliance, and the audits of the funds by the respective federal authorities of the parent companies of such funds shall suffice to meet this requirement. Again, there's audits required on the federal side, and what we're saying is that when those audits are performed, then those audits may be submitted locally to the insurance commissioner to satisfy the requirements of the reporting and audit requirements of the act here. So again, Madam Speaker, what this does is it allows our local companies to establish and expand the financial services industry on Guam. Prior to this, once again, I reiterate, that these monies, where they received by these pension fund managers on Guam, investment fund managers managing pension on behalf of their clients, would typically ship off this capital to an account in the states if they wanted to pull them and invest them collectively because of the lack of regulation and authority to do so locally. So what this does is it would expand our base for our local financial industry and the management of pension funds, allow the capital to remain on island, allow it to recirculate it on community, and provide additional financial capacity by the presence of these funds as deposits in local institutions, and we're hoping to see a greater expansion of financial services industry on Guam by keeping that capital on Guam and making it available to our local consumers of financial services and financial capacity here on Guam. So I ask my colleagues, Madam Speaker, to think carefully about this. I think it's something that, again, would expand our opportunity for additional economic activity funded by capital that is kept on island, generated on island, and with the passage of this bill, would allow to be deposited at our local financial institutions instead of having to be shipped off to off-island financial institutions and removing that capital capacity from our community. Thank you, and she's just messy, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Madam Speaker. On the motion, Senator Tomeda.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly, following the concept of Bill 59-32, I'm generally in agreement with the concept of the bill. There's just a couple of points that if the author would yield, maybe he could clarify. One, I understand the fact that, basically, all these monies that, for example, the retirement fund sends off island and invests the monies off island is basically to keep that money here and have it with a local financial institution, and it's not clear whether, does that mean we can deposit it all at a local bank, who can then turn around and provide, make loans available locally, or are we talking also about the possibility of then that money being taken, and I'll use as an example, I guess we're talking about something like the GovGuam Retirement Fund, to basically give it over, deposit it in a financial services, I think that was the term that was used, institution here, basically like a money manager, I presume, who I imagine is going to turn right around and probably invest it in other, I guess, other accounts off island where he can generate interest. So maybe if the author would yield and just kind of clarify, then does Bill 59 in any way say that it has to go to a banking institution that makes loans available so that that money kind of circulates here? Or can a financial services company which does not necessarily provide loans, can they also be eligible to do the same thing that, basically, GovGuam Retirement Fund is doing? So maybe if the author could clarify that.
Yes, Madam Speaker, and it's actually quite clear, if you look at page two under definitions, section F, "Financial Institution," which is where these collective investment trust funds are authorized to be established, means a territorial bank, a state bank, a national bank, a state or federally chartered savings and loans association, or a trust company under the Guam-based Trust Companies Act, that in each case is operated, is authorized to act in a fiduciary capacity in Guam. So it's, we're not talking about sending it to a money manager, we're talking about to a local financial institution as defined, which has a local deposit base and deposit capacity for handling this money.
Senator, any other questions?
Thank you, and I think the author of the bill certainly clarified it real well. Thank you for pointing that out to me. I presume, of course, that these financial institutions are, I guess, I guess each banking institution has their, there's some kind of protections or insurance from FDIC, I mean, it's not just some, it's not just any institution, it's got to be an institution that has some degrees of protection to it, so maybe if the author can clarify that.
Do you yield?
That's correct, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it's presumed that the deposits would be made in a financial institution that, number one, is able to provide some trust services, is authorized to do so, and in order to provide those services, that financial institution under the licensing laws of Guam has to meet certain regulatory and financial requirements. So, no, it wouldn't be able to go to Family Finance, for example, because Family Finance does unsecured loans and really is not set up or authorized by depository requirements and financial regulation requirements to act as a trust for deposits received by that company. So, no, the author is correct, I mean, the Senator is correct, that there are regulations that would allow, that must be met by these financial institutions to accept these deposits as a trustee and as a fiduciary to the acceptance of those funds.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and the final question that I have, if the author will continue to yield, is how would this, and again, using the example of the GovGuam Retirement, how is the, what is the process to decide that it's going to go to banking institution A versus banking institution B? Does it get put out as an RFP to see who's going to offer the highest interest on the monies being deposited, or is it basically a subjective selection on the part of, let's say, GovGuam Retirement?
Senator?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the bill is introduced geared towards the acceptance of private company pension funds. So the management of the government funds and the services procured by the GovGuam Retirement Fund are governed by the procurement laws of Guam. What this bill does is it actually regulates the private sector in the acceptance and management of private pension resources of private companies that will be pooled in this collective investment fund. So this bill is primarily for the regulation of private pension funds and not government pension funds. And of course, we want to do that because, and the companies that are accepting these deposits now want to do this to get greater clarity and greater certainty in the establishment and the regulations, and subject themselves to this scrutiny for the protection of themselves, number one, but more importantly, for the protection of the individuals whose monies are, who entrust their monies to these companies. So this legislation is meant to regulate those companies acting as fiduciary, as trust account holders of private sector pension money.
Senator, I'd like you to start the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think the author of the bill has answered the questions that I have, and I certainly thank the author for doing so. Thank you.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Mike Sanicholas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this bill. I appreciate the hard work of the author, and I appreciate his working very closely with the committee to allow us to add provisions in here, and I appreciate the indulgences of the body to allow us to provide the substitute version of the bill on the floor. The way I view this bill, Madam Speaker, is that it authorizes financial institutions to be able to create what's called a fund of funds. And what that basically means is that these collective investment funds that this bill will allow to be created are then able to take different kinds of investments and put them under one house. So you can have a mutual fund from one company, a mutual fund from another company, a stock from one company, a stock from another company, a bond from another company, and you can put them all under these, a single collective investment fund that you're then able to make available to investors, and those investors are able to then take $1, buy into this fund, and instead of having to take, instead of having to pick from one of the individual investments inside it, they're now able to get 10 or 20 or however many different investments are inside that fund, all spread out, but collectively held under that one fund's umbrella. And I really appreciate this bill because I'm coming from this particular industry, very passionate about further growing our ability to be able to offer these kind of financial services. And again, I appreciate the indulgences of the author, who allowed us to make some particular changes to the original iteration of this bill, and I just kind of wanted to go through them a little bit for the benefit of the members of the body, because while this bill does allow for these new funds to form, we've also put in a lot of different safeguards in this bill to make sure that the investors are receiving transparent information, they're receiving information that's going to allow them to make decisions based on performance, they're going to be protected, and many other factors, and I'll go through it briefly. We've passed out a copy of the different changes that were made in the substitute version, and so one of the key elements that we've added is we wanted to include that the establishment of these collective investment funds are maintained pursuant to 15 U.S.C. subsection 80(c)(10b), and that basically is the federal regulation of investment companies that define and state out the limitations of what a collective investment fund can do. So we've required that these funds are also going to be compliant with the federal standards so that when the federal regulators come here, whether it's FINRA or FDIC or the Comptroller of Currency or any other federal regulator, they're already going to know the exact stuff to look for because it's mirrored to the U.S. code that applies to investment companies. We've also included that the plan is updated regularly, no less than quarterly, so that whenever there's any kind of changes to the investment plan as it's going to proceed, that plan is updated, and that update is necessary to make sure that, one of the other provisions that we include in here, which requires that the initial investor, the initial investment is also, the investors provided upon the initial investment with a copy of the plan so that they're able to fully understand where their investment is going, how much it's going to cost, et cetera. So the plan will be updated regularly, and when you make an initial investment, you're going to receive a copy of that plan, and every time the anniversary date of your initial investment comes around, you're going to receive the latest version of that plan. And so that language has been included in here to mirror what is practiced by investment companies today where you're required to send a prospectus to your investors before they invest, and then you're required to send a prospectus every single year to your investors to keep them informed and updated as to the status of the investment fund. And so we've included that language here so that there's a lot of transparency. We've gone a step further where we require that the plan includes how much it costs to run the fund, and not just how much the manager is charging, but how much all of the underlying investment management fees are. So for example, let's say you have a collective investment fund, and the fiduciary, the local fiduciary is charging up to 2%, which is the maximum that we've also included here. If you have a mutual fund under there that has a 1% fee, and if you have another mutual fund that has a 1.5% fee, and if you have all these other fees inside the fund, they're required to report that also to the consumer so the consumer can weigh out, you know, if I'd taken my dollar and invested in this one fund, it would have cost me 1.5% per year, but if I take my dollar and invest in this collective investment fund, it's 1.5% plus the 2%. So they're able to have transparency, and okay, yeah, it's costing me more, but I'm getting more diversification, and I'm able to spread that dollar out around multiple investments. So they're able to weigh whether or not the cost benefit is really there for them. Additionally, there are requirements put in place, the written plan will state the investment performance of that collective fund every single year for the 10 years prior and up to inception. Now, anybody who gets statements from an investment company will know that typically that historical performance is reported, so we're requiring now that these plans also include that report. So if I put my money into a collective investment fund, I'm able to see, okay, that investment fund returned 10% versus, you know, I can look at, I can research another fund and say, oh, it did better, it did worse. So the consumer will be required, the company will be required to report to the consumer how the fund is performing so they know the true value of the investment that they've made. We've included provisions that require that no assets of the fund can be pledged as collateral, and this is very, very important because it's going to protect against the leveraging of those assets within the fund that would expose it to more risk. So we've taken that completely off the table, so there will be no leveraging of these funds, which is a very, very good thing. We've also required that, as the author originally stated, which was a very good provision in the bill, they have a valuation schedule, so all those assets that can be valued on a daily basis will be valued on a daily basis. We've also made sure that that value, therefore, is defined as the net asset value of the fund, so that if an investor says, okay, I put in a fund, so that if an investor says, okay, I put in a dollar, it grew to $1.50, I want to take my money out, they're able to take their money out based on what that valuation on the net asset value shows. So, the investor's going to be able to know how much their redemption is going to be based on that net asset value, so there's clear transparency there. We've made sure that no fees shall be assessed based on performance. So, that takes a lot of risk off the table, because if you invest in an investment vehicle that's performance-based, you're basically giving a green light for the fiduciary to take a lot of risk. And if it's based on performance, the fiduciary's going to want to target a lot of risky investments, because if he hits a ball out of the park, he's going to be able to take a huge management fee. That has been taken off the table. So, no fee shall be assessed based on performance, which is a very, very good safeguard for the nature of these type of investments that we're trying to address, particularly the pension funds. So, again, I want to thank the author for a very good bill that is going to help us expand in an industry that we have a lot of room to grow here on Guam, our investment industry. And, again, I'd like to thank the author for working very, very closely with us to include the provisions that we wanted to add, to make sure that the safety aspects were also included, as well as the transparency. And, again, I wanted to thank my colleagues for allowing us, indulging us, to allow this bill to be substituted on the floor. And I believe it's a good bill, it covers all the bases, and I ask our colleagues to please support it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, is there anyone who wishes to speak? Speaker Pangolino, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, Ms. Massey, I, again, want to extend my appreciation to the Chairman of the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations for his assistance and his contribution to this bill, which I certainly am grateful for and strengthens the protections afforded the individual consumers and the employees who entrust their funds to these institutions. And, again, this has a twofold effect, and when we were discussing this with members of our local community with regards to establishing something like this, we had two, basically, two objectives. The first objective, of course, is to allow greater flexibility to these pension fund managers to accept funds, manage the funds, and ensure that they are protected, as well as the people who are owners of those funds are protected as well. And so, we wanted to do that by including the regulations here that, as the good retiring speaker had mentioned, are tied to the federal regulations with regards to collective investment trusts. Because when you pull your money in there, it is, you're not buying a single stock or a single mutual fund, you're buying now the value of all of those funds, and so, you would be buying, if you, if the fund has, for example, a million dollars in there, and there's 10 people in the fund, and they all contributed 100,000, you don't own, you own 1/10 of the fund, basically. So, it allows you to now have that 100,000 in terms of its risk, spread out and diversified among the maybe 100 stocks, or 10 mutual funds, and 50 stocks that are in the fund, which gives you greater diversification. And so, it really does provide a greater opportunity for stability in these funds that translate into security for the individuals who are entrusting their money to the managers of this fund. So, that was the first objective, and I think we've done that and improved on that with the amendments that were made by the committee and the author. The other thing is we wanted to expand our financial services industry and increase the capital available for economic expansion on Guam. We know that these funds in the past, because we couldn't pool these funds and reduce the cost of investments by these fiduciary managers locally, because of the inability to pool these funds, that they typically took the money and invested them with other institutions off island. And so, this establishment of the regulation related to collective investment funds are now able to be accepted locally by our own financial institutions, meeting the financial regulation requirements of our local government, as well as the federal institutions that oversee their specific type of institution, whether they be, of course, a savings and loan, which are insured by the National Association of Credit Unions, or with state banks and national banks, which are insured by the Federal Depositor Insurance Corporations. And so, I think that what we have here is we're achieving those two objectives. We're allowing the establishment of these funds, protection for the employees who entrust managers of these funds, their money to the managers of these funds, and it allows the managers of these funds to get greater opportunity to reduce the investment expense, remain competitive, and pass on those savings, either as income from the fund, or reduce fees charged to the individual account holders. And the second objective, once again, is the expansion of our financial service industries by keeping capital on island, allowing it to circulate. And so, Madam Speaker, with that, I would like to make one motion, that is to add Senator Siniklas as the second co-sponsor on this bill.
Okay. No objections, so ordered.
And then, with that, Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 59-32, once again, as amended and further substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Guam Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations, be placed in the third reading pile.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. Bill, substitute Bill Number 64-32, the author, Speaker Pangolino, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 64-32 COR, introduced by myself and as substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations, be accepted.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And then, I would move, Madam Speaker, that Bill 64-32, as substituted by the Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generation, and accepted by this body, be placed in the third reading pile. I'd like to speak on the bill.
Yes, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this is another bill that I think gives opportunity for expansion of our local business landscape in terms of allowing and licensing service contracts to be sold on Guam. Service contracts, Madam Speaker, are typically what you would sometimes refer to as extended warranties. Extended warranties or warranties are provided typically in two different ways. One, they're provided by the manufacturer of the equipment, in which they, of course, warranty the proper performance of the goods and the products that they sell for a certain period of time. So, that's one way, actually, maybe three ways, then, that you would do that. So, one is that they're done by, they're sold by the companies as part of the product. In that case, they are typically referred to as warranties, and then typically, you would have either the retailer, or the manufacturer's representative, agent, who sells that product, would then perform the warranty service on the repairs, should those products or goods and services not meet the standards and the guarantees that they have placed when the products are sold. The other way that the warranties are met by these manufacturers or retailers is that they contract a separate or a third entity to be able to service those warranties, so that when a product's sold by a local store, for example, malfunctions, or it doesn't perform as guaranteed and required by the company, then the repair of that product is not performed by the retailer, it's performed by this third entity that has sold a guarantee or a, an extended warranty to an individual consumer, to the buyer of that product. So, in addition to original manufacturer's warranties, sometimes you get these opportunity to purchase extended warranties, which are performed by these third parties. And what this bill does is, in the past, in the recent past, these third-party vendors, you might want to call them, for the performance of repairs on products under the warranty or under an extended warranty over and above the manufacturer's original warranty, are performed by this third party. And what, because they are agreeing to perform this extended warranty service and repair that product, the Revenue and Tax Regulatory Division had ruled that these companies, these third-party vendors, really, because they are guaranteeing, based upon the sale of that extended warranty, are guaranteeing and ensuring that they're going to be there to perform the repair when the product malfunctions, were requiring these companies to be registered and chartered as insurance companies. So, even though we had this service being performed in the past, the additional regulation of, if you wanted to do this type of business, you now had to basically form yourself as an insurance company, because the interpretation was, you're ensuring that you're going to repair the product when it breaks. And so, when we did some research, Madam Speaker, we found that that really isn't the case, and that there is quite a bit of exception to that kind of ruling by the Insurance Commissioner on Guam, that these companies were typically not required to be chartered or formed as insurance companies, but had separate regulations under what they would call service contracts. You're guaranteeing to perform a service on the repair of a product should it malfunction. And so, what this bill does is then it removes this type of industry, this type of company from requirement under the insurance regulation to now having a regulation and a title and a chapter to its own for regulating these service companies. And so, Madam Speaker, again, these are what we typically would call service contracts. And so, what we've done is we've recognized that the original manufacturers and factory-backed warranties typically do not fall under the service contracts. So, for example, most especially with the automobile dealers. The automobile dealers on Guam basically sell the car on behalf of the manufacturer, and along with that car, as part of the sale of the car, is a warranty attached to that. And so, what this, that is performed by the factory representative dealership. And so, what this does is, for those original manufacturer's warranties and factory warranties, that that does not fall, the performance of that service of repair of these warranties, where the guarantee is not incidental to the, to the, to the purchase of the automobile, but actually, part of the automobile, that that is excluded.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you, but can senators, please, there's a lot of talking going on. I'm sorry, I know, I didn't want to lose your train of thought, but I, but you may proceed, I'm sorry.
Thank you, and Ms. Massey, Madam Speaker. And so, for the automobile dealers who are dealing with original factory warranties and original manufacturer warranties, there are not, they will not fall under the requirements and the regulations for these service contracts. And so, what the bill does is it sets up the definitions, of course, it sets up the licensing requirements, the financial responsibility that we require these companies to have the financial capacity to perform the repairs that they are promising to repair by the receipt of a premium, or by the receipt of the payment for the contract to have this third-party vendor repair that electronic device, or whatever, that is covered under the bill, to repair that with the contract that he has bought. And so, that would include things under the financial guarantee, Madam Speaker. For example, they're required to place a deposit with the, with the Insurance Department of Revenue and Tax, and they can perform or guarantee that they will perform in one of two ways. They can, one, deposit a fund reserve accounts for all obligations under the service contract issued in force on Guam, and that the reserve shall be no less than 40% of the gross consideration received from the sale of the service contract, lest the claims paid for all force, in-force contract, and the reserve accounts will be subject to the examination by the Insurance Commissioner. So, they can do that, plus place a $40,000 deposit, or 5% of the gross consideration received on their service contract. So, to ensure that they have the financial capacity to back the promises that they're making by the sale of these service contracts, they need to do that. Or they can just go and place a performance bond, for example, by a, buying a reinsurance policy. So, if they accept a million dollars in contracts for repairs, that they shall have, they can purchase a reinsurance policy that says if they don't have, excuse me, Madam Speaker, my, if, for whatever reason, they don't have the money to do so, this reimbursement or reinsurance policy will kick in, and they will pay for those contracts, because they've sold them a policy that ensures that those contracts will be performed. The commissioner, again, Madam Speaker, I do want to say that we work closely, once again, with the committee on this, and there were amendments made by the committee on this thing, that basically ensured that there'll be less discretion on the part of the insurance, of the regulators, in this case, the commissioner, that there'll be less subjectivity of doing certain things to ensure the protection of the individuals that purchase these contracts for repair of the goods and services that they have purchased. And so, those were included in here that mandated, rather than made it permissive and discretionary, on what the Insurance Commissioner must do when certain things are discovered during the regulatory process. The record-keeping, once again, requires books to be, to be kept, and the commissioner shall have access to those books, and make available to the commissioner accounts, books, and records concerning service contracts sold by the service contract provider reasonably necessary to ensure commissioner can determine compliance or non-compliance with this article. Annual reports, once again, are required to be filed by each of the service contract providers, and they must pay a filing fee for filing that report, and then investigations by the commissioner, which may require a service contract to file a monthly financial report whenever the commissioner deems that there's a need to more closely monitor the financial activities of the service contract provider. Receipts and disclosure, there's also a reimbursement requirement, so that if you cancel your contract, and the contract has not expired, if you contract for a year, you cancel in six months, you're able to get reimbursed for the unexpired portion of that contract, and that protects, once again, the consumer, and that can be found under the refunds and returns provision that have been included in this bill. The one other area, Madam Speaker, is, of course, outlining what are prohibited, because the, there's been a lot of use of words that, in legal terms, when you use a word, and it has a specific meaning in legal terms, we call that, it's a term of art. In this case, there are terms also used within the provision- In this case, there are terms also used within the provision of insurance services that can be called terms of art, and that is prohibited to be used by these service contractors because, once again, they're not insurance companies and they can't hold themselves to be out as such. And so words like insurance, casualty, surety, mutual, or other words descriptive of insurance, casualty or surety, or a name deceptively dissimilar, are not allowed to be used by these companies, just so that we don't create confusion in the marketplace there. And so, Madam Speaker, that, those are the elements of the bill and the components of the bill. Again, this is something that we believe will allow greater participation by individuals who are able to perform these services, charter themselves out as a service contract provider, establish themselves in that business, become third-party contractors to either factories or manufacturers or even retailers, and allow for a expansion of an industry that exists today, but with this regulation put in place, rather than having the more onus regulation of requiring them to be chartered and regulated as insurance companies, which they're not, would allow for greater expansion of this service industry here on Guam. So I ask my colleagues, once again, Madam Speaker, before I retire and certainly before I close, we worked very closely with the committee on this, and once again, I'd like to move that Senator San Nicolas be made the second co-sponsor on the bill.
An objection, so ordered. And the motion, Senator San Nicolas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. It sets a good regulatory environment for the provision of warranties and extended service contracts to be able to be offered on the island. The retiring speaker and author of the bill made mention of working with the committee, and so we did have a handful of amendments that we wanted to make to the bill with respect to those workings with the author, and these amendments have been circulated to the body, and the author has reviewed them prior to their circulation, and he is aware of their being proper. So, Madam Speaker, with your indulgence, I would like to proffer the First Amendment.
Can you repeat that again?
I would like to, we do have a number of amendments that we've worked with the author on already that I believe has already been circulated, that I would like to proffer with respect to the bill.
So these have not been already incorporated in the bill?
The initial version that was circulated to the members of the body did not incorporate these changes unless I am mistaken, but the version that I have with me does not reflect these changes.
The one that was accepted and then actually spoken about, it says "ask substituted by the committee."
Yes.
But in addition to that, these are...
Further amendments, correct, Madam Speaker.
All right, so, yes, so we'll go ahead and take the First Amendment?
Just to verify, Madam Speaker, do you have a copy of the amendments that we've circulated?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And I hope everybody also has a copy.
Yes, we circulated them. The First Amendment is on page fourteen, lines thirteen to eighteen, and it's referencing subsection A, changes the word "may" to "shall" throughout that subsection. That is the First Amendment, Madam Speaker.
Okay, from "may" to "shall," again, that's in three places, on page fourteen, from lines thirteen to eighteen. On the amendment, no objections, so ordered.
The Second Amendment, Madam Speaker, is also on page fourteen, line sixteen. After the word "persons," we insert a comma and the language "upon receipt of a consumer complaint."
Okay, on that amendment, no objections, so ordered.
The Third Amendment, Madam Speaker, is on page, also on page fourteen, line twenty-two. After the word "article," we include the language "until full remedy is afforded to comply with this article."
So on page fourteen, line twenty-two, we'll delete the word "or," and then add, continue on the sentence "until full remedy is afforded to comply..."
No, Madam Speaker, the word "or" remains...
Twenty-two, yes, lines twenty-two.
Line twenty-two after the word "article,"
Yes.
But keeping the word "or."
"Or," and, okay, so it's "or until..."
So in between the words "article" and "or," we're including "until full remedy is afforded..."
So it's after, so "article," semicolon, "or," and then "until," after words "until."
That's correct.
Okay, then, clerks, make sure you have that then, okay? But that's how it's reflected on the amendment. So on that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
And lastly, Madam Speaker, page fourteen, line twenty-three, we include language after the word "penalty" "at an amount not to exceed one hundred percent of the recourse afforded in subsection twelve, two oh four of this article for the purpose of affording remedy to comply with the provisions of this article."
Okay, all of that then would be, yes, a comma after "penalty" and that whole sentence then, and continue on with the "on a person." Okay, on that amendment, Speaker Pangolino, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly don't oppose the imposition of a civil penalty, but when I look at the amount and what this means, if you go back to twelve, two oh four, the requirement of a deposit to ensure the financial ability of the company to perform the work that it is promising by the receipt and the sale of that, receipt of the payment and resale of the contract, is $40,000. So what this does, Madam Speaker, is, and, you know, the violations of this could be, I mean, if they were more egregious violations, but because we didn't, the violations could be failure to file a report or something administrative, for example, not submitting a certificate of authority and allowing a fine of up to $40,000, we thought that was a little onerous. In addition to that, we kind of took a look at the civil penalties that are typically able to be imposed by the Banking and Insurance Commissioner on that, and fines up to that amount are typically quite rare. And so what I would like to suggest, Madam Speaker, if the author is not, is would be to amend the amendment, and rather than a hundred percent of meaning forty thousand, we took a look at what would be, we think would be substantial, would be an amount not to exceed $5,000, which is really, you know, twelve percent, fifteen percent of the $40,000, no, I'm sorry, twenty percent, no. I'm trying to figure it out in my head, Madam Speaker. Twelve percent, that's right, I was right the first time. So it's about twelve percent of that $40,000, and I thought that that would be more typical and in line with administrative authority vested in the Department of Revenue and Tax for the imposition of these civil penalties. So rather than not to exceed a hundred thousand or one hundred percent, amount not to exceed twelve percent, or make it fifteen, make it a round number, fifteen percent of the recourse afforded in twelve, one oh two, and I think that would still be quite a deterrent, in addition to, of course, still having the capacity to get the work performed by the provision of the reimbursement policy, if that's the way they want to go, or, again, the percentage based upon the total premium sold. To amend the amendment to read instead of a hundred to fifteen.
So it's, on the amendment then, it's to reduce from one hundred percent to fifteen percent. Is anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? No, is there no objections to the amendment? Okay, so ordered. Would that be it for you, Senator? Other amendments, or?
Actually, Madam Speaker, in light of that recent amendment, I would like to proffer one more, and that's referencing what I just recently amended on page fourteen, line twenty-two.
Yes.
I would like to strike the word "or" from there. That way, the violator would be required to provide remedy, and they wouldn't be able to sell anymore until that remedy was provided, because the most recent amendment that was amended would have provided a hundred percent recourse, but since we're only going to make it a $5,000 fine, I want to make sure that, you know, somebody isn't warranting something that could have been $40,000 worth of warranty that had to be fulfilled, but they're only going to have to pay $5,000 penalty, and they're able to walk away from not fulfilling the warranty with no future consequences. So I just want to strike the word "or" so that if somebody ever did that, they wouldn't be able to warranty things in the future.
Okay, so on the amendment, and that, in page fourteen, which is in lines twenty-one and twenty-two, and it should read prohibiting a person from selling or offering for sale service contracts in violation of this article until full remedy is afforded to comply with this article.
That's correct, I'm striking the word "or."
So that means we're deleting the semicolon and the word "or." Okay, on that amendment, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Is there anyone else wish to speak? Senator Tonyada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd just like to make a technical amendment on page thirteen, line five, where it says within sixty, it says sixty-five days, but in parentheses it has sixty days, and we can just...
Page thirteen, line five, credited within, can you repeat that again?
It states sixty-five, but in parentheses it has sixty days, so...
Okay, so, so which is, maybe we should ask the author, which is, sixties are correct, okay, so sixty days, so then to delete then the five, so it'll be sixty days, and be consistent, without any objections, so ordered. Does anyone else who wish to speak? There being none, Speaker Pangolino, would you like to close?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I had a couple amendments also that I wanted to offer, and they're being copied right now.
Okay.
So if we could just take a short recess until the...
We'll take a short recess.
Yeah.
Everyone should have five amendments. And so, Speaker, you may, I guess, tell us which ones first.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to offer the following amendments. The first one I'd like to offer is to amend Section 212204B1BII as follows. And this is the requirement of the financial guarantee that they have the capacity to perform the work that they are promising to do with the receipt of these contract, the sale of the contract. And so where it requires them to post...
So it's, wait, one, two, two, zero, four, B1? Is that the one? Because we don't have paged numbers here.
I'm sorry.
Section two. Yeah, we're trying to, trying to find...
Right. It's on page seven, Madam Speaker.
Oh, okay, no, but it doesn't...
Line twenty-two.
I'm trying to find also...
Or line sixteen, I'm sorry.
Page seven, the double, triple I. Where it just says cash?
That's correct.
On line sixteen?
Right.
And you're going to add more to it? Okay.
Yes, we would add cash or time certificate of deposit issued by a bank that is licensed in Guam and is insured by the Federal Deposit Insured Corporation or by the National Credit Union Administration.
Okay, on the amendment. No objections to the amendment? So ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay.
The next amendment, Madam Speaker, is one to amend Section 21222108.
Wait, wait, okay. One, two, two, one, oh, one, zero, eight. Okay, and the page, let me see.
The page is...
Two, two, ten.
My apologies, Madam Speaker, I didn't hear.
Okay, so that's A would be, okay, page thirteen?
That's correct. And that would be...
A?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and that would be on page thirteen.
Thirteen.
And it'll be on line twenty-four.
Line twenty-four, yes.
And that would be to add the word guarantee.
Okay, to add the word guarantee after mutual, page twenty-four.
Right, it's TEE.
And it's TEE.
Right.
Okay, the clerks, please make sure you have this, because I know you have TEE on that amendment without any objections. So ordered.
The next one would be on...
And on that same page as well, you are deleting after contract provided?
Oh, wait.
Provided, yeah, provider, line twenty-seven, to delete then? Is that correct then?
Provided that the word guarantee or similar word may be used by the service.
Continuing on to page fourteen, all the way to, on line one, where it says provider, period.
Correct.
Okay, on that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
Then the next amendment, Madam Speaker, would be on line fifteen, page ten.
Page ten.
And that would be to add the words after contract provider would be to add the word, if the insurance commissioner requires monthly financial reports, the service contract provider shall file, and then it carries on to monthly financial statements.
Okay, so on page ten, line fifteen, after the word provider?
Correct.
Then you add that one sentence?
Right, and then it would strike out, shall be filed.
And also, strike out, shall be filed, where's that? Shall be filed, that's on line sixteen?
That's correct.
Shall be filed, okay, to delete.
Then the next amendment would be on page seven.
Oh, wait, so on that amendment? No objections? So ordered.
The next amendment would be on page seven, line twenty-two.
Wait, page seventeen? Wait, no, there's no seventeen.
Page seven, seven.
Page seven. I was going to say there's no seventeen. Okay. Page seven, line, line two?
Twenty-two.
Or twenty-two?
So basically it would be to move number two down and add service contracts, for those service contracts providers that provide the subsections A and B of 12204B1 shall contain a statement in substantially the same format. The service contract provider's obligations stated in this service contract are backed by the full faith and credit of the service contract provider.
Okay, so everybody following that? On page seven becomes a new line twenty-two, moving number two down, adding the service contracts to the end, which says provider. On that amendment, no objections, so ordered.
And then the last amendment, Madam Speaker, would be on page three, line twenty.
Page three, line twenty.
And this is under the reimbursement policy section, subsection F. It would be after the word contract provider, you add the following sentences. A reimbursement insurance policy insurer shall not terminate the policy until it has issued a notice of termination required by the commissioner under the insurance laws, rules, or regulations of the government of Guam. The termination of a reinsurance policy shall not reduce the insurer's responsibility for service contracts issued by the service contract providers prior to the date of termination. The service contract provider shall be considered the agent of the reimbursement insurance policy insurer for purpose of determining duties owned by the insurer to the service contract holders in accordance with the service contract in this article. And insurers are deemed to have received the premiums for the insurance upon the payment of the provider fees by consumers of service contracts issued by the insured service contract provider. And what this does, Madam Speaker, is it kind of links the contract provider and his reimbursement insurance provider policy, so that they really have to work together to for the work that they've put into this and the body for its consideration of this proposal. Again, Madam Speaker, you know, we talk about what is our duty here in this legislature? What do we have an obligation to do? And for many of us, it really is about ensuring, you know, that the island remains a good place to raise a family, good place to educate our kids, and some of us, it's a good place to do business. And what can we do to facilitate and ease those members of our community as well as people desiring to make themselves a part of our community easier to do business? When the service contracts started to kind of pop up on Guam, they actually were in business and working well. They were meeting obligations to the consumers as well as fulfilling a service need of providing peace in mind to those individuals who wanted a greater and a longer guarantee that the products they buy will perform according to the specifications of the manufacturer, and they'll have the enjoyment of that product for its useful life. And so people were meeting that service requirement, that desire by our consumers on Guam. And then, of course, the insurance commissioner, as it is his duty, you know, kind of looked at this service and said, you know, we think it's an insurance company. And actually, Madam Speaker, this went on for a long time. The debate between companies that were performing and selling these service contracts had a long, almost one-year, 14-month history of trying to convince the insurance commissioner that they are not an insurance company, that they are a service provider to repair goods and make good on services and repair goods that are sold and that somebody, the consumer, will pay an additional consideration to ensure that when it breaks down, it can be repaired. And so this was operating well, and then the insurance kind of stepped in and said, no more, you can't do that, you can't perform that function. I believe, and my interpretation, is that you're an insurance company because you're ensuring that the work will be performed and therefore cease and desist in operating businesses. And so we looked at that, Madam Speaker, and we looked at the industry as a whole because, obviously, Guam's not the only place this is being carried out. And so we looked at it, we looked at the interpretations of the various regulatory bodies within the United States, and we saw that in a majority of them, these type of businesses were carved out of the requirement for regulation as an insurance industry. And even when that was presented to the insurance commissioner, they would not relent and still ruled that, no, we believe you're an insurance company, we're going to require you to charter yourself an insurance company. And so when we looked at it, we did the research, we talked to individuals and companies, we felt that it was in the public's interest to have them be able to purchase these services to those that are willing and have the capacity, both in terms of expertise and in terms of financial ability, to ensure that the work gets done and allow them to operate in a less regulated environment with regards to capital requirements and so forth, but still providing enough of a regulatory structure so that consumers who buy that contract have a reasonable expectation that they will get what they pay for. And we did that by putting this bill into, in drafting it up, introducing it, have public hearings, working with it. We worked with the national, the Guam Automobile Dealers Association, as I mentioned earlier, once again, because there is a distinction between factory warranties and manufacturers' warranties versus extensive contract warranties. And so we looked at the concerns raised by the Automobile Dealers Association, we agreed with the concerns raised, we looked at other jurisdictions, and there is a distinction made between these original equipment manufacturer warranties and factory and manufacturer's warranties, and we made sure that that was not part of this regulatory environment being outlined in this proposed bill. Because that is all, all of that work is done and is part and incidental to, that service contract is incidental because it really is part of the purchase of the vehicle and it flows with the vehicle. And so, Madam Speaker, when we looked at this, we talked to the attorneys involved in both those that represent the manufacturers, those that represent extended warranty companies, and those that represent consumers, basically, and we looked at the different statutes and finally came up with the draft of this bill, made some changes based upon the input provided during the public hearing, plus additional input in the review of amendments that were proposed. The insurance commissioners, quite a number of those amendments that I had just presented were the request of the Insurance and Bank Commissioner, which will regulate this as part of his duties, but not as an insurance company, requested that those amendments be made to give him greater clarity and actually, to their credit, gave them greater flexibility in terms of providing guarantees for assuring the general public that they will perform the job that they have been contracted for. So, Madam Speaker, you know, for me, one of the things, having come from the private sector over my earlier career, maybe I should say my earliest career now because it's been a long time, even though I still have, you know, activities that I monitor very carefully with regards to the private sector and the business environment in our community, but it is to try and find areas and opportunities to provide a more friendly business environment, from changing the Uniform Commercial Code, Madam Speaker, which was a tremendous task, to this bill, to the last bill. You know, I've always looked at opportunities and conversed with members of our community in the business sector of ways that we can improve our legal structure. We all talk about, you know, we have to have the great infrastructure to invite business development on Guam, we've got to have good roads, good water, good power. Well, there's this thing called the legal infrastructure, the regulatory environment, the how hard it is to establish a business. One of the first things I did when I actually got elected into the legislature was establish the one-stop business permit center. And, you know, I think we've got to go back and look at that, and I've done that, I'm doing that now, in terms of what changes do we need to make there? When we started it, there was excitement about it, there was commitment to it, and so all of the departments and agencies actually got together, formed this group, and you could actually, in the very early implementation of the first one-stop business center, permit center, you could actually walk in there one day and get all the clearances you need from all the departments and agencies, which was probably the exception of a health permit that needed to inspect the facility itself, and get either a building permit, a business license and so forth, in one day, in one place. And that was one of the first things I did because people were complaining how long it took to get a business license, how you've got to run all over the island to do so, and we needed to consolidate this. So we, again, at that time, we formed a work group, we took the input, we drafted the legislation, we implemented it, it started working, and then with time going on, people got less enthusiastic about it, and now we are hearing that it's not a one-stop business center, it's a one-stuck place, so that you go to one place to get stuck. And so we've got to look at that and see how we can unstuck the process up there and go back to the original intention of the law. But those are the things that, you know, even though we don't get the, you know, it's not a sexy thing to do, it is what is required to improve the business climate on the island, the investment climate, and the ease of doing business on Guam. And I certainly continue to, when the opportunity presents itself, immerse myself in some of these things and come up with proposals that I believe would add positively to the development of our community and our economy. So I thank my colleagues and ask for their support on this legislation. Thank you, and to this, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. And on the motion to send Bill 64-32 to third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Mr. Vice Speaker. Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much. The next bill on the agenda is Bill 79-32. Recognize, Madam Speaker.
Okay, let me see if I have my stuff. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Bill Number 79-32 as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land on the third reading file. And I would like to speak...
Any objection? Hearing none.
Thank you again, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker...
I'm sorry, was there an objection in the back? Oh.
Wow, I was here so early on. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. 79-32 is basically relative to authorizing the transfer of dormant and unclaimed bank account funds from the Treasury of Guam to the Guam Housing Corporation's Housing Trust Fund. Currently, the law that we're operating under is through public law 18-37 that was passed in 19, signed into law in 1986, that states that unclaimed bank account proceeds is sheeted to the government of Guam as follows. Savings accounts, there is a 10-year wait for the bank to be able to allow them to contact its depositors. Checking accounts, there's a two-year wait, also allowing the bank again to contact depositors. Deposits then are transferred to the Treasury of Guam for an additional five years before a sheetment occurs. After this sheetment, then funds go in automatically into the general fund. Bill Number 79-32 then seeks to reduce the period dormant and unclaimed bank deposits that are in the government of Guam from five years to one year. Secondly, it would authorize the transfer of those dormant and unclaimed bank accounts into the Housing Trust Fund to assist first-time home buyers. The other thing is that initially, in a little bit history here, public law 31-166, that there was an initial $500,000, which was funding, to fund the Guam Housing Corporations from their own budget to be able to fund this first-time home buyers fund. This then, however, has negatively affected the GHC's ability to lend mortgages to qualified borrowers. The corporation's revenues actually come from interest earned on any mortgages that have been issued, and those interests that are earned, of course, are at a low interest rate of about 4%. So the corporation continues now to seek other funding sources for first-time homeowners program. The corporation has also been investing in rental units to provide housing for qualified residents who may not be able to secure mortgage loans. So income then from those rental units also help to support the corporation to fund, you know, home loans in the future. So Bill 79 continues, of course, this serious conversation about how, you know, our government then can help residents to buy a home, at the cost, of course, where single family, we're seeing that single-family homes continues to be out of reach for many of Guam's residents. There are about 10 qualified applicants currently on the waiting list for first-time homeowners, and the reason why the number is low is because many of these individuals have been told, basically, the applicants have been told, is that there really isn't any money to be able to give first-time homeowners that grant, and the grant could vary anywhere, whether it's $5,000, $8,000, or even $10,000. Now, according to the GHC, in the public hearing, they told us, and this was verified when we had spoken to Gura as well, and they've been making this announcement because of the sequestration, that approximately 200 of Section 8 vouchers may be cut due to the federal sequestration. Last year, there was at the Micronation Mall, because I was visiting the area and wanted to see how the renewal homes, I mean, the, like, a housing expo was being held, and approximately, they say, 400 to 500 individuals had expressed interest in low-income homes. However, their biggest concern is always is the down payment and how the hopes would be is that GHC would be able to help, and without, of course, and the entire $500,000 already has been expended. So Bill 79, like I said earlier, seeks to authorize that these sheeted dormant and unclaimed bank accounts, a process, of course, that was authorized by law for well over 20 years, go towards helping our families, and also, in return, when you think of the multiplier effect, it would ultimately help, of course, our island's economy. However, instead of having these funds then go into the general fund, these funds now will go directly, the bill is passed into law, will go directly towards helping our families realize their dream of owning a home through the First-Time Homeowners Assistant Grant. So the program definitely supports affordability and accessibility of housing for low-income families, and like I said earlier, since that implementation, 70 families were awarded up to $10,000 grants from the initial $500,000 investment. 17 of those families receive home loans from GHC, with 53 families receiving home loans from other lending institutions on Guam, because as they apply and they realize that their monies aren't there, there are then these numbers that do qualify, however, they're unable to come up with the down payment. So these investments will yield millions of dollars in construction and home purchase activity in Guam's economy. So in essence, if, you know, there's no money, GHC, if they have no money to loan, then there's, then that means they don't have any money to give out in grants as well, and they've indicated that when they try to keep the loans' interest at a low rate, so if they go out and even try to get some money in to be able to loan, and if they're going to borrow at 6%, but then everybody else is offering it's 4%, and it makes it very difficult to be able to do that, so there's no way that they'll be able to charge even at 6% because no one will come to them to borrow. And so in essence, without this infusion of money, we might as well, really, literally, shut down GHC if they are unable to have this type of funds actually go in to support their program. So with that, then, Mr. Speaker, I ask my colleagues if they can support, give due consideration and support Bill Number 79.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Sniklas, did you have your hand out? Didn't you have an amendment? Yes, you're recognized. And then Senator Duñez, any other senator wish to be heard on this bill? Senator Panglin? Please, Senator Sniklas.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of this bill, and I rise in support of it on several principles. The first is the principle of a sheetment. A sheetment is practiced throughout the United States. As a matter of fact, there are some sheetment provisions in various states that are a lot more, how do I say? A sheetful. I've had situations where, I've heard of situations where an asset will be sheeted just because your mail has been returned several times. So a sheetment is a practice that's throughout the United States, and it's intended to make sure that we aren't allowing dead assets or unclaimed assets or assets that are, to which the beneficiary is not identifiable, to just sit on the books and continue to be an expense on those who are required to maintain a record of those assets. I rise in support of this bill because... I rise in support of this bill because it will take these types of assets that are dormant and sitting there, and will actually turn them into use assets, and will be productive for our community. In the finance world, one of the worst things you can have is a dead asset. Even worse is a depreciating asset, and when you have money sitting in accounts that aren't earning any kind of interest, they're just depreciating because their value is eroding with inflation. And so after a certain amount of years passes, these assets are then is sheeted, but instead of us sheeting them to some unknown purpose, this bill is going to specify that it gets is sheeted into affordable housing. And while we have dead assets or depreciating assets as the nightmare of financial, of somebody who wants to invest, on the flip side, we have homes, homes for first-time homeowners, and there is no, there are very few assets that can be considered more valuable and more worth committing resources to than a first-time home. It's an excellent store of wealth. It provides not only for your basic needs of shelter, but it also appreciates over time. And when somebody owns a home, they become a stakeholder in the community. They have value established in the area they reside, and they begin to take a greater interest in the advancement of the place that they call home. So investing in first-time homes is a very, very good way to turn these dormant assets into actual productive assets that are going to be not only benefiting people's lives, but also, as the retiring speaker said, investing in our community, creating jobs, adding value to the base value of our community, because when we build a home, we turn a vacant lot into an actual lot, a piece of property with an asset on it, and then that increases our overall land values, and it just has a domino effect, an increasing value across the board on Guam. So this bill is very, very good for the purposes intended. There is one amendment that I wanted to introduce, and I want to preface the introduction of this amendment with a little fiscal reality as well, and that is that in 2015, because of the borrowing that we've done over the years, our debt service is going to go up by $15 million. So we're going to need money in 2015 to make up for this new added debt service that we're going to have to pay for. On top of that, our hospital is going to have an $8 million balloon payment due in 2015, and I want to make sure that money is going to be there for that. There's other things that we're looking at, but this sheetment process also needs to be considered for that. So I wanted to proffer an amendment, Mr. Speaker, and I believe this has already been circulated, on page three, line 10. After the word "program," I wanted to include this statement, "The allotment of such funds shall cease upon the expiration of fiscal year 2013, with future sheetments credited to the general fund." And the reason why I wanted to specify this is because in 20, with the expiration of 2013, we have fiscal year 2014, and then we're going into fiscal year 2015, and so I wanted to make sure that anything is sheeted after 2013 is going to start accumulating then into the general funds that we can address this debt service that is a freight train coming due that we cannot be blinded, we cannot be blind to. And I wanted to make sure also that this amount, and this money and the purpose that it's going to, is going to go to building homes and stimulating the economy, so that by the time 2015 comes around, we should have a little more stimulus as well in the system. So we'll have future sheetments available for that 2015 bill on the debt service, as well as on the hospital loan, and we'll also have some economic stimulus between now and then with the provision of these monies going into the first-time homeowner program. So I rise in full support of this bill, and I'd like to proffer this particular amendment I just recently referenced, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, I saw Senator Duñez's hand go up, and Senator Munir Barnes, do you wish to speak on this amendment also? Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I will make a short comment on the amendment, because when I speak on the main motion, it will make more sense as to why I'm going to move, as I am, and actually state my position. Very shortly, prior to raising an objection to the amendment, I will simply say that the program that is being funded here and designed to be funded is going to have such a much larger economic implication to our tax base if it is allowed to remain in this program on a multi-year basis than the narrow focus of allowing this funding source to simply go into the general fund. There was some comments that perhaps there's already an intention for the hospital, or maybe other intentions. That's not clearly stated at this time. It's simply an idea, and we have a stated purpose in this bill, which I will talk to on, like I said, in the original, when I speak on the original motion, but, Mr. Speaker, I respectfully state and move now an objection to this amendment on the basis of the fact that it's just not economically the right thing to do. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez. So there's been an objection stated. I see, Senator Munir Barnes, and then, did you want to speak on it too, Speaker?
On the amendment.
On the amendment? Okay. And then, Madam Speaker, you wanted to speak on the amendment? All right. So it'd be in that order. Munir Barnes, Panglinen, want that. You're recognized.
Mr. Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on the amendment, and as I appreciate the author's intent of looking at where the future is, is sheetments will be credited to and asking that it go to the general fund after fiscal year 2013. I do know that my colleague from, where are you from? Afemi Sinahanya had some concerns and objection, but wanted to dwell when he spoke on the main motion. My take is, as we look at something that was created at least 14 years ago with the good former speaker from Baragada, and having the vision to create a program to work with first-time homeowners for realizing a dream come true for our local residents, but more importantly, is to provide for that better quality of life. 14 years ago, in Bill, in public law 24-180, there created this first-time homeownership Fast forward 14 years later, in public law 31-66, the good speaker from Baragada introduced legislation that became public law 31-66, which found a mechanism, a funding source to be utilized, and through that utilization, Mr. Speaker, there were 70 families that were afforded the opportunity to work, to receive closing costs, portions of their closing costs, to help them realize and make that quality of life better, but that dream come true for having these families really own their own homes, having their children own their homes, and that better quality of life being so much better. This bill, as introduced by the good speaker today, gives that opportunity so that we can continue to move that program forward, and we, there is a funding source. It's not going, it's, like Mr. Beneventi from Guam Housing said, it's not going to hurt anybody, it's a victimless tax, I guess is what he said, because it wasn't taking the time to raise any taxes or charging any additional fees to our local residents here, but finding something that hasn't been attached to, that this would be the opportunity, this new funding source. So in the efforts of seeing the realization of what has happened today with public law 31-166, at developing close to $12 million in real estate transactions because of the realization of utilizing the funds that were given to this first-time homeownership fund program, the multiplier effect and having these houses actually built and having the funds multiply into the economy, that's a lot of money. And what, what better opportunities if we are given, if we afforded the opportunity to move forward and give more families the opportunity to build their dream homes, to have their families be a part of their dream home, but more importantly so, adding to that multiplying effect by having our economy grow, and having that, those finances and those transactions affect the economy for the better here on our island. And I want to share with you, Mr. Speaker, that I did have a statement-
Can I, I really hate to do this, because I like what you're saying, no doubt, but maybe I need to do a point of order, because if you read really the amended version on page three, that there is a period of limitation shall be to one year from the effective date, so unless the mover is, you know, deleting this, to amend this particular section, that thing needs to be clear, I think, first, then we can start over. I'm sorry, Senator, I don't mean to-
No, she's stating a point of information, Mr. Speaker, but I know that if this goes through, then something becomes moot, so if we want to entertain that, I'll go ahead and accept it, but I did have concerns regarding the amendment. So I was going to share my concern of-
Thank you.
-opposition.
Senator Panglinen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of the first-time homeowner program, having worked with that program over the last 14 years, and the most recent reiteration of it, but I really have some difficulty with what we're trying to do with the funding source being identified for that program under Bill 79. And when we discussed it, and the idea of finding a funding source, we have a funding source for the first-time homeowner program. It's set in law, and it's set in statute, and it is a recurring and self-replenishing funding source. The funding source comes from the net income of the Guam Housing Corporation. The reason why, when we worked the reiteration of the first-time homeowner program, is we know that when we were supporting it with the general fund, because the original funding source was 1/10 of the GRT collective, which is the general fund, we were able to get that implemented, and as we moved on, families were getting loans, homes were being built, and families were being sheltered, and provided a safe and loving and caring environment in a safe and proper home to raise their families. But because of the financial challenges that the government of Guam and the general fund faced, the governors subsequent to that just decided to ignore the funding of the program, that they didn't want to implement it. And I must apologize to the many families out there, because for the first two to three years of the program, I followed up every year, and so for the first two to three years, funding was given to Guam Housing, loans were being made, grants were given to families, and then I thought, it's working, we'll let it go, and I didn't check on it later on. And so when I started to, once again, talk to families, and I would direct them to Guam Housing, because they're saying, hey, Senator, you know, it's so hard, you know, and over the years, we made other changes in Guam Housing that was, allowed it to basically put loans in place. So the program, taking money out of the general fund now to support the first-time owner program, in my opinion, is not necessary, because there's money at Guam Housing to fund this program. The reason why we have this bill is because Guam Housing does not want to use their money to support the program. They want the money to come from the general fund, and I'm saying, we can't afford it in the general fund. We have, you know, a, I don't know whether we have a deficit or surplus, but we certainly have obligations-
Excuse me, Mr. Speaker. Are we on the amendment?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Because I thought you were speaking to the main bill.
No, no, no. We're on the amendment.
Okay, okay.
And so the amendment, you know, the bill wanted to make it a, to put this program in place, this bill would limit it to a one-year, kind of a stimulus package, which, you know, I may be willing to support, but I still say is not necessary, because there's funding source. Guam Housing Corporation is generating net, positive net income, and they just need to provide what is called for in the law, and set aside a portion of that net income to make this first-time homeowner program loans, I mean, grants, but they don't want to do it. The latest audit released by the public auditor says, for the first time, the largest expenditure at Guam, increases expenditure at Guam Housing was not salaries. So Guam Housing is saying, we don't have the money to support this program. For the first time, because of the implementation of the first-time homeowner program, this is the largest expenditure that has increased at Guam Housing instead of salaries. And we looked at that when we decided consciously to say, dedicate a portion of your net income. You know why? Because it generates new revenue for Guam Housing. From the grants that they're able to make to this first-time homeowners, they made 70 grants, 70 mortgages were issued, 17 of those mortgages were issued by Guam Housing Corporation. So Guam Housing got new business in the door that they generate for their own portfolio because of the grant that they're funding, and of course, the others were from commercial banks. So the total interest income from these 17 mortgages is going to total $2.3 million. That's the money that's going to come to, just from those 17. So if they continue to generate new mortgages out of their own portfolio by supporting the first-time homeowner from their net interest, from their net income, they will have additional revenue for other programs themselves, $2.3 million in this case, over the life of those mortgages. So what I'm saying is, we're taking money from the general fund in which we have many, many obligations that we haven't paid for, when we can not afford to take it out of that. There's a 15% reserve imposed by the governor across all departments and agencies to cut back on expenditures, because there's not enough money. And yet, we're going to take money out of the general fund to give to Guam Housing, only because they don't want to use their own money. That's the, that's the only reason. And I'm saying, you know, we can take a look at some additional other sources of funding that would not impact the general fund. This money is always transferred at some point in time to the general fund to meet the obligations of the government of Guam, and these are coming from the sheeted accounts. And maybe when I speak to the bill itself, you'll see who owns this money. The government of Guam, it really, as the good retiring speaker who offered the amendment said, you know, escheats statutes are all over the place, but Guam seems to be a escheater than most, you know, because once we give the money, we don't do anything. We don't do anything to reach out to those individuals, and we're saying, oh, the banks do that because they publish in the paper. They publish, we publish in the paper all the time, but it's, how, how do you want to ensure and give the greatest opportunity for these people to understand that they have money sitting there that they can claim back? And we should have, we should intensify our efforts to give that money back, rather than intensify our efforts to grab it and use it ourselves. So again, the amendment takes it for one fiscal year. Again, I say, it may not be necessary, I don't believe it's necessary, because Guam Housing has a replenish, the program itself has a self-replenishing funding source for that purpose of issuing new grants. But if we're going to do it as a stimulus, so that we want to do 17 more than we were able to do under just Guam Housing Corporation for one single year, I could probably support that as a stimulus. So that's why, like I said, I stand in support of the program. I'm just really, really concerned about taking money. And once again, the other issue, Mr. Speaker, is that this money is, actually, we're taking the money out of the- the money out of the general fund. We've already appropriated this money. If you take a look at the Budget Act, it says that these excess revenues and unappropriated revenues that are realized during the fiscal year are supposed to go to pay off prior obligations, retire our debt, meet our commitments to our employees. We haven't given employees their increments because we say there's no money. When we had money, we paid merit bonuses instead, instead of giving the increments that is required by law, that the Attorney General says if you don't pay it, it becomes part of the deficit and an obligation to that employee who is due an increment. The liability doesn't go away. And so the bill contemplates, and the Budget Act contemplates, when these monies come into place, we pay them for other employee obligations that we haven't paid, you know? Judgments for employees that are due compensations that we haven't, that's what this money should be going to by the law that we pass in terms of 31-233. So this money is already appropriated for that purpose, the teacher furlough payments, the debt that we have to reimburse the federal government for the make-work pay. We should all, we have, not we should, we have, by an action of this body in passing 31-233, have said that all of these unappropriate revenues in the General Budget Act of FY 2013 that are realized during this fiscal year shall be dedicated for payment of these obligations. And so now we're foregoing making those payments to those obligations and taking this money and putting it in Guam Housing, which, I reiterate, has a funding source in place that does not require us to do this. And so on a one-time stimulus, I could probably see my way in supporting that. But again, that's the history and the background that I want to, the other, so again, Mr. Speaker, it really is critical to understand what the impact is on this bill to the General Budget Act of 2013, to the requirement that this money, really, I would rather just keep it and develop a program to notify these individuals and give them back their money. Let's not use it. It wasn't ours in the first place. They're not taxes, they're not obligations, they are money that were left in bank accounts and people forgot to or haven't had the opportunity to go back and reclaim these monies. And instead of grabbing it, we should be giving it back and doing all that we can to do so.
Thank you. Senator Munir Barnes, I mean, I'm sorry, Speaker Wampat, Speaker Wampat, on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Just reading, of course, you know, the amendment, it says that the allotment of such funds shall cease upon the expiration of fiscal year 2013. And to me at least, is that all we have left in 2013 is four months. And as you go through the process of submitting and preparing your application to be able to get these grants, then technically, then you won't be able to even give maybe only the 10 that are in the waiting list right now because they should, it would expire at the end of this fiscal year. So, I mean, I understand, of course, and can accept that this is not something that's going to be used forever, but the thing is, is that this short timeframe of about four months is just not going to cut it, so I can't support the amendment.
Thank you. Any other speakers on the amendment? If not, I'll allow the proponent to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want to make a couple of things very clear. First, I very much support the program for first-time homebuyers. I think that this bill is excellent. We're going to be infusing an additional $1 million approximately on top of what the operation currently has, an additional $1 million to support the establishment of first-time homes. That's great. Now, the retiring speaker mentioned that four months isn't going to be enough time because that's the only amount of time remaining in the fiscal year, but we need to fact, take into consideration the fact that what this bill is going to do is it's going to take everything that's accumulated over the five-year current timeline, and when we amend that timeline down to one year, that's all immediately going to be bankable with this bill. It's not going to take four months to transition that four years' worth of accumulation into the Guam Housing Corporation, and that's where they're going to get a $1 million cash infusion. That's stimulus. That's very good. We're going to be able to build so many more homes of that money. I think my problem, Mr. Speaker, is maybe I'm just thinking too far ahead. Maybe 2015 is a little too far ahead. But the reality is that in 2015, our debt service is going to go up $15 million. The reality is in 2015, we're going to have an $8 million balloon payment for the hospital. The reality is that in 2015, we have a $23 million bill. Now, I don't know how other people manage their money, but the way I manage mine is when I know I have a bill coming, I don't take what little money I have and go and spend it and hope it's going to make more. Granted, when we give money to housing, it stimulates, and that's why I support the basic structure of this bill that's going to give the eschements up until the end of 2013 for that purpose. But beyond that, we need to be mindful of our bill. We need to be mindful of our bill. An irresponsible developer, Mr. Speaker, is one who's going to continue to spend his current cash flow without being mindful of their looming debts. And so if we're going to be irresponsible in the way we build houses, let's go ahead and give the money today and give all the future dollars away. And then when that $23 million bill comes due, guess what? If we were a private sector developer, we're bankrupt because we're not going to be able to capitalize the continuing operation. We need to make sure that we're thinking further ahead when it comes to managing the money, the people's money, and making sure that we're going to be addressing all of those obligations that we already see coming. And that's why I introduced this amendment, Mr. Speaker. We know in 2015, we have a $23 million bill coming. No ifs, ands, or buts. So why is it so difficult for us to pass an amendment that's going to stimulate with what's currently available, but it's going to take what future, the money that comes in the future, and it's going to be putting it into the general fund to pay for this obligation that we know is coming? Mr. Speaker, it's the responsible thing to do to make sure that we're balancing our approaches today with our realities of tomorrow. We have a $23 million bill in 2015. We're going to need the money to pay it. So let's stimulate with what we have and make sure that everything else going forward is going to go to pay that bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senators Nicholas. There has been an objection to the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please indicate by raising your right hand. Motion fails. On the main motion, I have Senator Duñez, then Speaker Pangolin, and then Senator Munir Barnes. Any other senators wish to be put on this list? Okay? Thank you. Senator Duñez is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity to rise. In support of the original version of Bill 7932, I will speak on the current motion before us as I will lead into an amendment after that. And I would ask the clerk at this point, or the staff, to please pass out the amendment. Mr. Speaker, I sat through the public hearing on this bill, and I can say, Mr. Speaker, there was no question on the presentation made by Mr. Carlos Camacho that this type of an investment, and the original investment of even just the multiplier effect by the $500,000 by Guam Housing, had in his estimation, and what was, I believe, realized, up to $20 million of economic activity, Mr. Speaker. You know, the mover of this great original piece of legislation stated a lot of the issues, but I'm going to restate the fact that we realize and we understand that not only is this program, that the good speaker from Baragada was the father of in general, has proven that it not only is an economic stimulus and generates a great deal of economic opportunities, but it also helps those, Mr. Speaker, who fall through the cracks. Those individuals who will realize homeownership, like mentioned by other speakers on this floor, the good senator from Tallahassee, realize that homeownership by either getting a down payment or actually a straight-out loan for this purpose and the purposes of the program. Mr. Speaker, it's been mentioned on this floor, and the record will show in the public hearing, that the director of Guam Housing made it clear, they are near to or in the red with regard to their programs. I believe that's why our good speaker, the mover of the good original piece of legislation, made the point. The point being that if we're not going to do something and continue to show sustainability to this program, then we may as well just shut them down. Mr. Speaker, we all know, many of us, who have worked for the executive branch and who have been the administrators and the individuals responsible for federal funds, that federal funds are not an endless pot of money. In fact, I think I heard the good speaker who introduced this bill mention a couple of times, at least during my listening to her conversations, that sometimes federal funds are cursed. Because you get them, and your responsibility afterwards is to find a way to sustain them. Mr. Speaker, that's what we're doing here. We're taking these escheded funds, the one-time, of course, first-time appropriation of the funds that we know exist of upwards of $2 million, and stimulating and sustaining this program moving forward. And if we use Carlos Camacho's formula, we're looking at tens of millions of dollars of economic opportunities. Mr. Speaker, the substitute bill changes the original intent of the bill, basically changes it to be a one-time appropriation, the same as was proffered actually, basically, in the amendment that just failed. Mr. Speaker, there was also discussions on the amendment that the responsible thing to do is to invest and stimulate with what you've got, look down the road, and understand that you've got bills that are coming. And I understand that there was an assertion made that with, you know, your own personal resources, that's what you do, you don't take the little bit that you have and gamble with tomorrow. The only difference, Mr. Speaker, is this is not a gamble. This has been a proven formula. That's why they're in business, and that's why hundreds of our residents on this island now have realized the value of homeownership. Mr. Speaker, another point. This program is not only for the purpose, not only for the purpose of garnering that type of dollars available to those falling through the cracks that can't make a down payment, but to actually support their loan programs. So it's a multifaceted situation that exists here in terms of what the opportunities are.
Point of information, Mr. Speaker, this program, the first-time homeowner assistance program, does not support the general lending programs of the Guam Housing Corporation. So these funds are being made available only for the first-time homeowner and not available for the general lending operations of Guam Housing Corporation.
Well taken, Mr. Speaker. However, we all know that within the agency, that allows for the opportunity then to shore up other programs. I mean, a general fund appropriation that's in excess of last year's general fund appropriation means you can do additional things with your federal funds that you weren't funding in other programs. I've done that before. As long as you're not supplanting, you're good to go. So, Mr. Speaker, I would just say, the overall general stimulus of funding provides for flexibility and opportunity for the myriad of programs that exist within the agency. Mr. Speaker, it was also mentioned on the floor here, and I understand that. I miss reading the paper sometimes, one, two, three days. Sometimes I don't get the phone call from Dad that said, hey, did you go to this function? But the fact of the matter is, in this situation, that's not the issue because the individual who would discover that they had funds that they had forgot about and was published and the institution did its job, its responsibility, they can go and file with the Government Claims Act. Their money is not dead. They don't have no opportunity to get that money back. They have an opportunity to seek remedy by going and filing with the Government Claims Act. Mr. Speaker, talking about responsibility, we all have personal responsibility. And in case we missed it at one point, certainly, that's why there's remedy within our government to ensure that the opportunity is there to file with the Government Claims Act. Mr. Speaker, I would close with this. There is no question about the looming government debt and things that are becoming to be realized in future fiscal years. No question about that. I would offer two things that I think we're going to go through the exercise here in August, up until August, when we're going to pass a budget on this floor. We also have to realize that it's our responsibility to live within our means, to do everything we can to make government more efficient, to enter into possible public-private partnerships. That's the responsible thing to do, to manage the people's money properly. Not that the looming debt in the future is chicken little and the sky is falling. Our job is to do the hard things and to make sure we manage with the money that we have and that's projected, working with the executive branch of government. Mr. Speaker, I think the facts will continue to bear out that it is the economic engine and the economic opportunity that will provide for increased tax revenue in the future. That's where you're going to derive your money, by continuing to create an environment, just like has been spoken on this floor, for those who have been in the private sector before. That's what our job also is, aside from managing the money that comes into this government. Generate a climate, generate an environment where you're responsible with what you've got, and you're responsible to the investors to make sure that they can make Guam a better place to live. So, Mr. Speaker, in closing, I would now like to move the amendment at this time. In my amendment, Mr. Speaker, as I passed out, is to go back to the original version of 7932 so that we can have a multi-year appropriation to this program. And as we know in this body, if we find a better thing to do with it in the future, if Uncle Sam says, hey, happy days are here again, Guam Housing, you're now fully funded, you've got plenty of modern money for your program, we can always come back here, sit down together, and make a responsible decision. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this bill. 79 has introduced, Mr. Speaker, my amendment at this time.
Thank you very much. On the amendment, there's an objection. Did you wish to speak or just object? Both? All right, then, you're recognized. Anybody else wish to speak on the amendment? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm very confused, Mr. Speaker. The author, the retiring speaker who proffered the amendment was talking about responsibility and not ignoring our obligations, and then he was talking about changing the bill so that we're basically not going to be having the future money available for those obligations. And I'm trying to make sense of it all. With the original language, we're already going to be providing an extra $1 million for the program. That's a lot of support. That's a lot of support. We're providing $1 million on top of the current many competing interests that sure would like to have another $1 million for all their many programs. But the reason why I'm willing to support that, in spite of all those competing interests, is because we need to support first time homeowners and it is a stimulus to the economy. However, Mr. Speaker, I will always draw the line when it comes to making sure that the money in the future is going to be there for the obligations in the future. And when we have $15 million that's coming due because of the borrowing that we've done and the borrowing that we've done was to make up for not paying the tax refunds that we were supposed to be paying, and then we weren't paying those tax refunds that we were supposed to be paying because we were too busy spending the money over all those other years, and now we're going to go and say, "Let's go and appropriate all of this future money now so that we can stimulate even though that bill is coming due." Mr. Speaker, when are we going to draw the line and start actually managing the people's money responsibly? When are we going to draw the line and say, "Yeah, I see $23 million coming down the pipeline that I'm gonna have to pay and I'm gonna try and make sure money is there"? When are we going to draw that line, Mr. Speaker? I'm very curious. And I'm so curious because that was a major reason why I decided to seek this office. So that I can stand here and say, "Yeah, let's stimulate with what we have, but let's also at least be mindful enough to look at least two years out." Is that too far for us to look? We can't see a $23 million avalanche coming at us two years away? At what point, Mr. Speaker, are we going to draw the line and be responsible with the people's money? This bill will identify $1 million to stimulate and to provide support for the first time homeowner program. A million dollars they didn't have previously. A million dollars is going to go a long way to continuing the program, which is a very, very good program. It's coming in on top of all these other competing interests. But let's not ignore our realities anymore about how we need to manage the people's money. We have $179 million in uncollected accounts receivables at rev and tax accumulated over the last 10 years. Our public auditor is saying that we have the last two years of GRT that we haven't reconciled. And now we're saying that, okay, when we have future shipments, we're gonna go ahead and just give it to this program because for every $500,000 we generate $20 million in stimulus. Mr. Speaker, one of the things that I've learned is that if you wanna manipulate data to validate the outcomes that you want, there's many ways to do it. Why don't we just appropriate this entire general fund budget to Guam Housing Corporation so we can turn $400 million into $2 billion? Surely, the metrics will work out the same. So let's be reasonable, responsible. Let's not ignore a $23 million avalanche coming our way and then all of a sudden in 2015, we're gonna be saying, "Oh, look at this and look at that and the legislature didn't do this and the legislature didn't do that." This body, on regular occasions, is the one that gets put through the wringer the most for the spending decisions that we make. So let's make sure that we're gonna be holding our own selves accountable for something that we can see so clearly. I rise in objection to this amendment, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. On the amendment, Senator Pangolinan and then Senator Winia Barnes.
Thank you very much. And Sidus Massey, Mr. Speaker. Speaker, there's many statements flying around and, you know, "Oh, we have to do this because Guam Housing doesn't have the money." As I mentioned, when we recreated this program and looked at a funding source that would not impact the general fund, we took a look at Guam Housing Corporation's financial statements. So when a comment is made that, "Oh, they're almost in the red," take a look at the last audit of Guam Housing Corporation. They generated 509,000 net cash provided by operating expenses, by operating activities. So they added an additional $509,000 in cash to their financial position after closing out the fiscal year and paying all of their expenses. And then you go and you look at what the cash and cash equivalent at the beginning of the fiscal year and what it was at the end of the fiscal year. So their cash and cash equivalent at the end of fiscal year 2012 for Guam Housing is 6.6 million. That's cash sitting in the bank that they have. Of this amount, unrestricted cash balance is $4.3 million, 200, $4.329 million, I mean In restricted cash balance in their accounts, they have 2,329,435. So to say, "My God, we have to give him this money because there's no money to support the first time homeowner program." They've got $4.3 million sitting in the bank, unrestricted, to support the first time homeowner program. Why are we doing this? Because we don't, they don't wanna use that money. Even though it generated 17 new loans for their loan portfolio that would generate $2.3 million in total interest income from those 17 loans alone, but they don't wanna use their own money. When they say, "We support first time owner, but not at our expense." Not at our, well, what is your duty? What is your mission as Guam Housing? Isn't it to put people in homes? When you have $4.3 million sitting in the bank, lend it out or if you don't want, if you wanna maximize the economic impact to the community, then maybe you don't lend it all out as part of the own internal portfolio. Maybe you set aside, like we have in law, that you set aside half a million for grants on first time homeowner that will translate into economic activity by the private banks. And then you can generate your own internal lending that will generate activity for you. And in this case, with just those 70 loans, 17 generated Guam Housing, they will generate 2.3 million in interest income. So why are we going to take money from the general fund that is already by law and statute obligated to pay our liabilities and give it to Guam Housing to implement a housing program? Shouldn't Guam Housing use housing funds to stimulate housing programs? They don't want. For the first time, again, why? Because last year, you know, the salaries at Guam Housing increased by 5.4%. How much did they increase on the executive branch of general fund? Zero. No increase and we prevented our employees from getting a increment, not even the hay study, just their regular increment. We haven't given these employees the money because we froze it. Oh, no, the governor froze it and the attorney general has come and says, "Even if you freeze it, you still owe those employees and that's gonna come due." And we're gonna have to deal with that because we have teachers who have filed for these increments and they filed in a grievance to DOE so that they can exhaust the administrative remedies available to them. After they exhaust the administrative remedies, they're gonna go to court. They're gonna get a court order that says, "Pay." And what are we gonna do? We don't have the money in the general fund? We're siphoning it away. Again, you get people that come up here and make these statements that they're almost bankrupt. They can't afford it. I don't know. I'd like to be bankrupt with $4.2 million in unrestricted cash in the bank and $2.3 million in restricted cash. I'd love to be bankrupt like that. I'd love to have no money with that kind of bank balance. And yet, we're ignoring our obligation in the general fund side and sending this money over to somebody who has 6 million in the bank to support a program that they are chartered by their enabling authority to support and fund homeownership. This money, we have obligations. When the governor had, I don't know, we're still trying to figure out where he took it, but when he had an opportunity to meet the obligations of this, we have bills now coming up. He decided that the most important thing he was gonna do was pay employees and he paid merit bonuses instead of increments. But that is the priority that he has set. And I think that's not a bad priority, but I think the priority should be increments because these are individuals that are being denied that, that step increase under the merit system. And instead of trying to meet those kind of obligations, we're going to send money over to Guam Housing for their program of which they have 4.3 million in unrestricted cash sitting in the bank that they can use and by law, they are supposed to use. So when they're telling these applicants that they don't have any money, that's not the case. Because the law says, when you deplete the first appropriation of half a million dollars, you replenish it. So if they have 10 applications, that's only $60,000 if it, because the average grant is $6,000. So they need to replenish $60,000 and give out those grants to those 10 applicants. Not 400, not 500. Then when they get more, they replenish it once again, up to half a million. And again, this year, they generated half a million dollars in excess, in excess income over expenditures. So they add it to their financial position.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker?
So that... State your point of order.
Yeah, I apologize, Speaker Ben, but I rise to a point of order. And given that we accepted the Bill 79-32 as amended, I think a more proper motion would be either a motion to reconsider the action of accepting this amended version and then if that passes, then we can proceed with the motion before us. But what I was gonna suggest after consulting with the sponsor of this bill, that we proceed, we resolve into the committee of the whole and we invite those Guam Housing officials in so we can ascertain the veracity of one claim that there's money versus the other claim that they're operating in a net...
Mr. Speaker, is he questioning the integrity of the information I'm reporting to him? Because the information I'm reporting to him is the Office of Public Accountability's Audit FY 2012. I'm not reading any numbers that are not on there. So if he's saying that he doesn't trust what I'm saying, I'm not making these numbers up. I am reading from the Office of Public Accountability's 2012 Audit of the Guam Housing Corporation.
I think your statement can be broken down into two. One, whether or not it was proper to accept the amendment and whether or not that was an improper or frivolous amendment under 401. And then the issue of whether or not we want to go into a...
Committee of the Whole.
Committee of the Whole, which is completely separate issue over whether or not this amendment was proper.
Point of inquiry, Mr. Speaker, then?
Yes.
In that event, because I thought that that might happen, I actually then, if I would still have the floor, have two other amendments that would have the same effect and I believe I would be in order to move amendments that would do the same thing. I was just trying to make it efficient, but other than that, I would still hold that I would be able to move amendments that would address the sections. I wanted just to make that point, Mr. Speaker.
Under the rule 401, an amendment identical with one previously decided on is not in order. And so, I mean, I'm not sure if I can just suissepanti that that's not in order and then have a vote.
Or we give the gentleman the courtesy of asking if he would withdraw his motion.
If the will of the body is to go into committee of the whole, I really stand firmly...
We have to go back, we have to first address the issue of the amendment.
So I will have the amendment stand at this point, Mr. Speaker. I would like to run a recess against all my legal counsel, Mr. Speaker.
We'll take a short recess.
Well, point of order, Mr. Speaker, I think what you're presenting is an opportunity for him to withdraw the motion to go back to the original version. Otherwise, you may suissepanti that his motion is not in order.
Well, I've announced that. We'll come back. He can speak to his legal counsel and then we'll...
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Dwayne, yes, you recognize.
Mr. Speaker, thank you very much. After consultation with minority legal counsel, I now go ahead and withdraw my amendment as put forth, recognizing that I have a place to introduce the similar amendments in a different version. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection? Hearing none. Mr. Majority Leader?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I certainly appreciate the previous speaker withdrawing his amendment to bring this bill that was accepted, the as amended version, back to the original version. The other thing I'd like to ascertain the pleasure of this body, Mr. Speaker, is whether or not we're going to resolve in the committee of the whole for purposes of deliberating on this bill. It's very clear that this is an appropriation measure. And if that's the determination, then the rules provide that we go into committee of the whole. Otherwise, I would have to make a motion to waive that requirement. So I leave it to you to dispose of what the will of the body would be at this time.
All, any other, anyone else wish to speak on whether or not we should have committee of the whole or waive? If not, I will take a vote. We'll recess for a minute.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, after much discussion amongst our colleagues, I move that we waive the standing rule requirement regarding appropriation measures and then the requirement to have a committee of the whole. I move that that rule be waived so that it would allow us to proceed with Bill 79-32 in our session.
Any objection to that?
Yeah, we're going to resume this to my line.
There's two separate discussions going on. The motion by the majority leader was to waive. Your motion to recess will be secondary to that.
That would be my next motion, Mr. Speaker.
Is there an objection to the motion to waive?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recess until 9:00 a.m. tomorrow.
We'll recess until 9:00 tomorrow.